Ladies and gentlemen, it is four o'clock. At the time we get our afternoon lead, at this time we'll turn over to Mayor.
Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. This afternoon's session is a continuation of March's presentation series, the purpose of which is to build familiarity with the resourcing of possible initiatives and city functions. Bridget handed out a rating tool, which we encourage your use as a means of prioritizing or rating today's topics and those from previous sessions. It looks like this. It's a, I'm not sure if it's one page, front and back, or two, it is two pages, two separate pages. Please do return the form to Bridget today. Today's topics, I'll briefly highlight points from previous sessions, a couple of themed presentations from our staff, and also SWAT presentations if time permits, my wrap-up, and summary of the next meeting dates and topics. Before we begin the formal presentation, a brief recap of the past sessions. Major points that I took away from March, March 3rd. We had two themed presentations on facilities and branding. In terms of facilities, our existing centers, recreation centers are being used adequately. However, the city should approve the alignment of programs with interest and demand. Secondly, we should consider eliminating those programs lacking inadequate following. And third, developing facilities that support clusters of neighborhoods. Second themed presentation was on branding, and that can serve to energize our team, build a cohesive message, and help unify our efforts to market ourselves and present a distinguishable identity. From the three SWAT presentations, my takeaways were, first, from an HR presentation, Deborah provided insights that compensation in the form of pay and benefits is and will increasingly affect our organization. From finance, Lisa gave us insights that the department is feeling an impact of technological and policy obsolescence. And Chief Ron from Fire indicated that there were staffing shortfalls and feels that the effects of inadequate compensation. Highlights from the March 17th session, major points that I had. We had the three themed presentations, which included employee retention, master plans, industry recruitment, acquisition, and airport as a catalyst. The first, Deborah identified value in investing in training, supervisor development, and compensation. Also, we have nearby competitors such as cities like Charlotte, Indian Trail, perhaps Matthews, and industry in the form of regulated and unregulated utilities that will take our employees if we're not competitive. And thirdly, that investing in pay for performance and classification and compensation studies both provide management with tools that can incentivize performance and achieve competitive pay that will increase retention. The second theme from that date was on master plans. And there are four, more than four master plans or conceptual initiatives, admission to the downtown master plan, recreation in Greenway, Concord Avenue, and land use transportation existing plans. But if you also include Scott Safety, property across from City Hall, Sutton Park, and the industrial, proposed industrial park number three in the mix, all are worthwhile to be considered. The point, I guess, is that although plans are subject to change, at some level, we need to have buy-in for the long-term, for the long-term. Our ability to influence development and, or the future of our community substantially diminish if we aren't buying into those plans or others that we develop in the future. The third theme, industrial recruitment, acquisition, airport as a catalyst. Chris and Peter demonstrated the value towards investing in growth to sustain our commercial tax base, which helps offset the cost of services to our residents. And secondly, that we have near and long-term opportunities in the form of adding product through buildings, building a spec building, supporting the redevelopment of Sutton Park, which may be more of an intermediate-term initiative, and for the longer term, the creation of a third industrial office park to advance our future as a place to live and work. And thirdly, airport enables, it has features of regional hub, supports tourism, and also has an economic stimulator, supporting industry and soon customs traffic. The one SWAT presentation that we heard was from Water Resources, and Russ suggested adhering to best practices derived from business principles. Secondly, that he felt that there was a staff deficit, lapses in investing in those personnel existed. Third, that growth in infrastructure via collaboration and partnerships were an opportunity. And fourth, that assets are reaching their, end of their life cycle and will require increasing amounts of investment. This, this slide highlights the many presentation dates and topics. The structure that you saw in March involved two types of presentations being continued, having themed presentations and SWAT or strength, witness, opportunity, threat style presentations. The themed presentations focus across departments for the community, and the SWAT presentations drill down into individual departments and give you the department perspective. There are two themed presentations scheduled for today, and a number of SWAT, SWAT presentations programmed if time allows. Also, this week is the first of two community forums, which will be held on April 9th and 13th. April 9th will be a worthy honoring, beginning 5:30, as will the one on 13th at the North Country Club. 21st is an additional workshop that was proposed, and will conclude the series of presentations that we've been doing beginning in March. Today's lead presentation will be from Brian and Jim on deferred maintenance, which includes facility needs and infrastructure deficits, followed by group of departments providing insights on staffing requirements and shortfalls. After those are complete, again, if time permits, we'll proceed with SWAT presentations if the board is so inclined. At this time, I'd like to welcome Brian to the podium for the topic of deferred maintenance.
I hope you know all the.
The click first. You're hogging the click.
Thanks, sir.
The power's in the click, right?
If I can work it, I guess the button with the arrow still. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk a little bit about deferred maintenance. The majority, I guess, the focus is on parks and rec facilities, but we do have deferred maintenance issues citywide that I will touch on in the presentation also. And if you remember, the space needs assessment that was done a few years ago, there were a couple of facilities mentioned in there that I will bring out towards the end of my part of this presentation. After that, I'll turn it over to Jim, who will address streets and sidewalks. So just to get, there's a lot of recurring themes you'll see in the different aspects of deferred maintenance. Improving accessibility, building, updating, and just general maintenance of each of the facilities, including those outside of parks and rec, and signage are consistent throughout. You'll see that fencing occurs in some, some of the repurposing aspects in this presentation, or things that aren't really used to their potential there, that maybe we should think about repurposing them to better serve the community that takes part in that. None of this is in stone. This is kind of suggested staff experience and observations through the years. So you'll see at Sutton Park, it's 11.8 acres, and we're estimating about $75,000 of deferred maintenance that is needed at that facility, addressing each of those areas. Picnic shelter would be needed, grills, tables, benches, trash receptacles. The tennis court fencing is a major issue. Some of our fencing at the ball fields is just very old, some of it even original, and we just need to replace that. Creft Park, 10.3 acres, we're estimating about 350,000 in deferred maintenance in that area there. We have done some work in the most recent years there with regards to rebooting the picnic shelter, doing a couple other things there. But you'll see the recurring themes, ball field lights and access to restrooms, if that facility has restrooms. We need to update those so that they can be controlled from a computer. We have a lot of requests, especially for restroom accessibility, Beltonawanda or other facilities that have them. Sunset Park, 8.2 acres, we estimate about 125,000. And this list is not, I'm not saying that that's everything, it's not all-inclusive. These are some of probably the more major or more evident needs at those facilities. And you'll see here the computerized locks to the restrooms. This would allow staff from an office to control and open the restrooms, say at nine o'clock in the morning, lock them down at five or whenever the park, you know, if there's an event there, we might leave them open, but shut them down when they're closed. And let's see, you'll see repurposing basketball courts to picnic shelter, that signifies that we're not getting much use there in that aspect, in the courts. So repurposing that to a shelter where we might be able to increase in revenues or rentals or those kinds of things might be a better use.
Are there actually, as in all buildings over there, because I thought they had taken them down and they had a shooting of their years ago?
That, I, I'm, I don't know.
Okay.
No, I'm pretty sure you got basketball.
I think they had goals, I think they were replaced at one.
Yeah, all weekend, lots of people, lots of time, and he didn't have a problem.
So I mean, picnic shelter, whether it's there or somewhere else, or, you know. Dickerson, 62.7 acres, about 200,000 is estimated there. The ball fields, the bleachers, picnic tables, renovating the restrooms is a big one there. Those restaurants have been vandalized a lot quite pre, in the recent times with graffiti. I'm sure you're aware of that. And of course, our recurring theme at the bottom of accessibility and just general upkeep and signage.
Brian, let me just add to that, it's not, you know, like arguing for making these restrooms lockable via computer and remote, you know, but I wonder, we all know that that's a real issue, you know, all of these facilities vandalized. And I wonder if in replacing those with these computerized locks, and we get, you know, nothing is fail-safe, so they're probably going to tear those off too. Are we not into a real higher repair or replacement cost at that point, once we computerize?
The vandalism that's occurring now is on the exterior because the restrooms remain locked. They're not open for public use unless there's the scheduled event thing.
They're tagging them.
They're manning them.
They're tagging them. Now, we did try something a few years ago where you could call in and get a code, it was, you know, you punched three numbers, but they, those have gotten beaten off and to access or whatever. This would be something a little more permanent, a little more secure. Now, they're open during the day. I can't, I can't guarantee you there's not going to be vandalism or other activities going on.
So that'd be the deal.
That'd be something we'd have to monitor or have controls or something.
Open up every day at certain times.
Right, right. So that, that brings on other, other.
Exactly.
Issues or other needs or whatever.
We're not talking about setting cameras and the rest, you know, visibility.
We're in the process of doing that right now. Parks Williams Athletic Complex, 30.5 acres, 900,000. Part of that is soccer field turf, converting that to artificial. We have limited the use to twice a year to that field so that we could establish turf because if it's used constantly, it would just be a mud.
Dirt field.
Dirt field. So we've worked with the teams and we get it established, but because of the heavy use, it would be much better artificial turf, but that costs substantial amount of money. Stabilizing all of the non-turf grass areas, we have issues there. Parks William was built years ago, it was, I guess, a part of the grant that funded part of it, but in the budget and things were cut. So we economized in some areas, but demoing, doing some demo, of course, the restrooms, updating, and accessibility and signage. Old Armory, about 75,000. Fencing, picnic shelter and tables, and always, you know, accessibility is an ongoing issue, you know, new requirements, new mandates. We're just trying to keep up with, with those. Winchester Center, four acres, about 100,000 estimated. You have on your agenda tonight the replastering to consider for a budget amendment. It has gone through committee, so it's on consent as of now unless it's pulled. Just a note on that, if it's not funded through this budget amendment, it has to be in next year's budget. We have no more use of that. It's, we've had it, it's due about every 10 or so years, and we've extended that life some, so it's overdue, basically. Repairing the drive, the asphalt there is part of that. Beltonawanda Park, 17 acres, 150,000. This is the one where we get the most request for access to the restrooms. This is one of the most used parks really in the system. Adding a new picnic shelter there, renovating the bigger picnic shelter with the restrooms, those are, restrooms are in need of repair and renovation. Replacing some lighting, and the amphitheater needs, needs some work with the seating and different things there. All facilities citywide. We, we have quite a number of properties that, that the city owns, City Hall and others, all of our different energy, you know, water, buildings throughout the city. Just recently, we did an, about a year or so ago, an HVAC inventory. There was no such thing prior. But now we know what we have and the age, and we have the worst on a replacement schedule. We can make some educated decisions on some of that. What I'd like to see is a condition assessment of all of our facilities, everything in the city. That would include roofs, it would include electrical, it would include plumbing, a painting schedule, HVAC, update that aspect of it, and the, the range is probably about 60 to 80,000 dollars. I've done some more work on that. This would fall in line with our facility due to our work order software that we're doing. We would partner, they have a company that can do that, and what this assessment could do would be rolled into our capital forecasting, which we forecast out exactly when, when and the needs and dollar amounts. So it would be a good tool to really be serious about the deferred maintenance issues we have throughout the city.
Right, and you talk about heat and air, plumbing, electricity, roofs, all of the silver, isn't that typical of the look?
That, this is just to do an inventory, an assessment, a condition assessment. They would come out and say, okay, City Hall, your roof, you got a year left, you better look like finding $300,000 to replace it. So they would, they would tell us that, they'd give us an idea of what that would cost. Now, of course, as time goes on, costs would go up or it would be obsolete to some extent, but at least we'd have a base to start with. You know, restrooms being renovated, just general upkeep and updating, painting, flooring, carpet, windows, all of those things, blinds, you know, all of our buildings need that. Accessibility is a constant issue, also signage at all of these facilities too, to coordinate that message, make that identity kind of cohesive and comprehensive. Future facilities in our space needs assessment, it was brought up about Fire Station One being moved out from the police across the street, a new facility and administration being put downstairs. That would open up for police department to occupy that whole building. Now, looking at things and talking through things, would it be better to maybe build a new police department also, and have that facility developed or do something else with it, developed by the private sector, get it back on the tax books? If you're really looking at it, build new might make more sense. This could be something that could facilitate the downtown master plan in the Five Points area, where we have the new police station, we have our senior center in that area, tourism is looking at a science, kids' science facility, museum, all of that could be right there in that gateway into downtown. But we need to kind of plan and look out into the future at those costs. Now, Ron and Brian are here, our two chiefs, if they have anything more to add, I'd welcome them to chime in. I know it's a big point for the police department with their accreditation.
It was part of their accreditation that they needed the new facility, was it not? It was one of their recommendations.
Give one recommendation on our last two accreditations, that our facilities are really dated, they're outdated, and the majority of our officers are scattered out through town, so the central location for the police department, we don't have access to where we get all of our officers. Thank goodness we have technology, we're able to address some of the needs, but just from the making it function and a proper way to where we can have all the staff in one place for training, for meetings, whatever. We're in bad shape. And that building needs a lot of work, and we just keep putting money into it through Brian's office to try to keep it, put a band-aid on it to make it another day or another year or so.
You have five, is it five of them, or is this besides the police department, the officers, ramped up or five?
Yes, ma'am, it's five.
I was thinking it was five.
Two on Turner Street.
Two on Turner Street.
Ismore Lee.
You're there by design, though, are you not?
Sometimes, yes, sir, we are.
I mean, that's where you want to be in a community.
Sure, but we can't get, even if we did have those facilities, because the city owns two, we're leasing one from a church, and we're working with the housing authority of having an officer. But even if we did have those, you'd have different obstacles, financial obligations to those facilities to maintain those properties as well. So in doing so, yeah, you want officers out there, but we obviously need to look at the bottom line, how much is it going to cost us to keep these other places up and running?
Did you say you was leasing one from the church?
We're in partnership with the church on Ismore Lee Street.
They don't charge you anything for that stuff, do they?
Well, we take care of the maintenance and the update, no property taxes.
Okay, yeah, I'm with you now.
Yeah.
There's a cost.
There's a cost.
Yeah, well, I knew, I would, yeah, I knew that you were doing a lot.
Yes, sir.
I was thinking about what I rent.
Yes, sir, fine, yes, sir.
And I would just add that, as you know, in that master facility study that we had, that we had conducted, the recommendation was that we move the fire administration out of the police department to build up a new Fire Station One across the street here on the Scott property. Once that fire station moved out, then move the fire administration out of the police department into downstairs here, renovate that area. Certainly need there for both, because you know this building's about 74 when it was opened, so it's a little over 40 years old, and just the base space downstairs is very much just inadequate now, you know, for both of the city. You know, the other option that certainly could be considered is, you know, we do want to look at building a new police department, is possibly doing a, you know, joint, like a complex, property across the street, there may be some cost savings in that. If council does decide that you want, or do decide that you want to do a new police department, then that may be an option as well, so certainly something, something we could look at.
We do have a couple of options. But with regard to the deferred maintenance, just the parks and rec facilities, that, that's about a 2.3 to 2.5 million dollar total. That's not a dollar figure on any of the other city facilities regarding the program.
The reason it's not so bad is over the years I kept pushing it out because of the budget, so it's catch-up time.
It's, yeah. And I think, I think Mr. Lloyd's next. Mr. Lloyd will entertain you for the next little bit.
Good evening. The graph that you have in front of you shows payment condition rating since 1994. The payment condition for a street is affected by a number of different items such as rutting, rare the payment, allocated, cracking, fractures, and a lot of general cracking, and then the payment repairs in rutness and ripability in roadway. The rating below 65 is considered to be poor condition. 66 to 80 is considered to be a fair condition, but anything above 80 considered to be in good condition. At first glance, just looking at the payment condition rating from 2014, that's the front road. One would say that 6% of our streets are fair or better, but as you begin to look at the chart and see how it started declining from the very good and the very poor starting to increase on the front road, you realize that, you know, this is sort of unhealthy trend. The percentage of poor and very poor streets is growing. Staff recognize this trend was happening back in 2007 to the funding levels, and we developed the payment management plan, which divided our streets into two categories, a priority and local residential. The city maintains possibly 170 miles of roadway. The priority streets within the city are possibly 22 miles and less, and provide connectivity to the state street system, and typically service collector streets. Roads on the state system are defined by their secondary route, US or North Line Route numbers, as the case may be. There's samples included like Charlotte Avenue, which is SR 1009, Franklin Street is SR 2100, then you have US 74, US 601, and Morgan Hill Road, which, that is NC 200 for example. The state roads typically originate outside the city limits and extend through or into the corporate limits. Our priority streets that die into the state system includes roads such as Jefferson Street, Pfeiffer Street, Williams Road, and Seagulls Avenue, they ain't a few. The local residential streets are considered to be minor streets, and primarily serve the immediate neighborhood, and they have minimal traffic volumes and include the remaining 150 miles of street that the city maintains. The goal of the maintenance plan is to resurface all priority streets on a 12 to 15-year cycle, which correlates with the industry standard. By default, local residential streets are on a longer cycle than, which is currently at 62 years. Next chart, the life cycle of the road will show why the percentage of poor or very poor streets in our neighborhoods will continue to grow along with city's complaints based on the current payment cycle. This chart shows the typical payment deterioration curve. The chart outlines that a payment typically has a 15 to 20-year life cycle. At 18 years, the chart indicates about a 40% drop in quality over the next 10 years, with a five-fold increase in cost. Since most of our local residential streets are on a 62-year cycle, they're going to require reconstruction. And this is the reason why the staff initiated a reclamation program in the street division. Since the riding surface is so cracked and allocated at this point in life, the asphalt surface replac- for asphalt service replanted into the subgrade and set up to add strength to the road bed. Then we come back and have a new asphalt riding surface on top of the reclaimed subgrade. This meant that it's costly and time-consuming. And this next slide shows funding versus material costs. Takeaways from this graph include that basically that power bill funds has been fairly consistent unless three to four years, really flat. Material costs are higher. Asphalt was thirty dollars per ton in early two thousand, increased to a high of eighty-six dollars per ton in two thousand eight, and currently, thanks to the lower gas prices, the petroleum costs, we're at sixty-five dollars per ton. Concrete was originally around sixty-five dollars per yard in two thousand, and it's rose in state city at a hundred-and-eighteen dollars per cubic yard. So basically, unless it's getting accomplished with higher material costs and steady funding levels. This chart, chart shows funding needed to meet the goal. The street division is currently able to reclaim, resurface one-four miles of street with a budget amount of four hundred thousand dollars. We focus the street division resources on the local residential street classification. Over the last seven years, we've been allocating additional three hundred thousand from the general fund for contract work. Currently, by contract, five-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars invested, which enables about one-point-five miles of high priority streets plus some local residential streets to be resurfaced. As you will see on the next slide, to maintain the current average payment condition rating of sixty, which is a fair condition, we will need an additional five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars for contract work. To improve streets to an average rating of good, we will need an additional one-point-five million dollars. This chart shows that with additional, looking at the green line, I'm reckless on the green line, if you look at the green line, this chart shows that with an additional three hundred thousand dollars for contract work being steady over the next ten years, and a budget of nine-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollars, that's our current budget. The BCR rating is projected to decline from sixty-eight of fair condition to about a fifty-two PCR, poor condition. Most of our streets would be poor or very poor based on the software's projection. If we failed to receive the additional three hundred thousand from the general fund each year, the green line shows that we're projected to have a PCR of forty-five. Back off the lines, back where I meant to say, the red line shows that we would decline to a fifty-two PCR. And then with the green line, if we failed to receive work, it's projected to have a PCR of forty-five, which is very poor for the average street in the neighborhood for ten years. Look at the red line of the graph, maintaining our current curb rating, we will project to need an additional five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars, bringing our budget to one million five-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars. The blue line indicates that we would need an additional one-point-five million dollars for our current budget for each average PCR rating of eighty. Sidewalk deferred maintenance, basically the focus of the street division is for ADA compliance, American Disability Act compliance, and construction of street reclamation. Special projects is signed by a city council, sidewalk repairs, tree replacement within the downtown and road area, and it's also a complaint driven from citizens. Currently, we have had some contract projects approved over the last two fiscal years. In fiscal year twenty-fourteen, we had the Brooklyn Road Walk of Avenue improvements. This year, we're looking, look at the next two months, a contract for estimated cost of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and then we're proposing for fiscal year twenty-sixteen budget, additional two-hundred thousand dollars to complete the south side. And the following two slides, okay, following three slides talk about our new sidewalk construction. Back in nineteen ninety-six, we developed a priority rating system, which used factors that identified that affected construction, and the purpose was to eliminate subjectivity. And the goal was to distribute and provide equitable guide for sidewalk construction. Right now, in our current status, we have twenty-nine projects on the list, with a backlog totaling about eight million dollars. Currently, we are pursuing a project for secret shortcut from Red Fox Run to Barbie Farms, and that's, we're getting enhanced funding from state for that. And the next two slides shows the current list of projects that we have. So, these all projects totaled up to a hundred and seven million dollars. And that's, any questions on deferred maintenance?
Kofar, we'll be transitioning to staffing challenges, which is a series, you'll hear from a series of departments, their insights on staff deficits or staffing challenges. It's an opportunity to humanize, if you will, operating shortfalls. And I believe first up is Jim, Engineering Department.
Jim, you didn't get very far.
No, I didn't, I didn't get too far. Staffing challenges for the street division general fund. A little bit of background, the public works crews were restructured in fiscal year twenty-eleven from twenty-one to seventeen employees. The original structure provided for a one-seven-person concrete crew, one-six-person special project crew, and two-three-person asphalt crews, and a two-person sign shop. Our current structure provides for four-four-person public work crews and one-person sign shop. The staffing proposal by engineering is to return the street division to the original staffing level in fiscal year twenty-eleven. We are proposing to increase the concrete crew from four to six people, the special project crews from four to five, and keeping the other two crews at full personnel. Also, the proposal is restore the sign shop to two technicians. The potential benefits, by increasing the concrete crew to six, the additional personnel will enhance the abilities of the concrete crew to complete projects on major materials without impacting the other work crews and their functions. We have found that a six-person crew performs best to complete constant pouring of personnel from other crews for traffic control and other items such as hauling, demolition, and excavations. Increase in concrete crew size by two members improves functionality of the crew, improves ability of the crew to place concrete to enforce, as well as enables personnel to move ahead with preparation of future areas while the concrete finishers are finishing at the current port. SAP expects readily seen improvements to the sidewalk system and sidewalkability with addition of these personnel. In fiscal year twelve, the sidewalk material budget was cut by one-third from ninety to sixty thousand dollars, the capital loss productivity. Therefore, the expectation is that the concrete crew will increase its ability by one-third. We hope to get back to our previous letter. Also, this enables maintaining the recruit continuity, and with the additional sign person, we hope to improve signs along roadways. Currently, regarding the sign personnel, currently crew members are shuffled in and out to assist on one sign shop technician as needed. And typically, sign crew needs at least two people for those jobs. Unmet requirements, as addressed in the previous slide, staff has determined that a six-person crew is best for working along major roadways for traffic control and to facilitate the workflow of the job site. Regarding the sign shop to the top work, the crew size is typically two. With reduction of staff in fiscal year twenty-eleven, we continue with the expectation that the public works crews will continue with their primary function of reclamation resurfacing, utility patching, for that prepare, concrete approval, the street sign maintenance. As illustrated in our material costs, the concrete crew production decreased by one-third. The reclamation resurfaces program has been reduced by about fifty percent instead of almost three miles of street per year, now that the fiscal only typically reclaim maybe one and a half miles in fiscal year. The constant shuffling of personnel affects the timely completion of projects since the key points, one project must take precedence over the other, hence the backlog duration of projects increase. Staff deficit, the total estimated cost for adding two individuals to the concrete crew, one to the special project crew, and one street side technician is approximately two-hundred-and-triple-thousand dollars. Staff expects the personnel being immediately impacted, we receive, those who down with commercial driver's license are allowed six months to obtain, and since concrete currently consists of recruited, already operated two concrete finishers, the two additional employees will have a greater opportunity to be trained for concrete finisher positions. For various reasons, we've had, kept one of our positions open for concrete finisher for almost a year, so we'll have problems filling the position by the qualified candidates, so we have this for half that. And then, risk and implications, as fruitlessly discussed, we have shuffling the personnel to complete job objectives, complaints from citizens will increase with also duration of projects, and the latency of complaints.
I will say that your concrete crew does a very good job, and I hear a lot of compliments.
We pride ourselves, and I appreciate that, we also, we pride ourselves in pushing the quality of work.
I hear a lot of compliments out in that, they're out working.
Thank you.
They do a good job, so.
Thank you, Jim. I believe you will be followed by Chief Brian.
Jim, while Chief Brian's coming up, if we had any, we getting any information from the state regarding Charlotte Avenue and Franklin over there, with that bad, with that bad attack called in and that intersection, there at the bank, you know, picking up Franklin Street and Charlotte Avenue intersection.
I'll need to go back and look.
The state's thing, and they were, they repaired it about every couple of years.
Yes.
But I imagine everybody in here has been through that intersection, and those were what I'm talking about.
You're talking about Charlotte Avenue and Franklin, yes.
Well, I know that's going to have anything to do with this, but I'm just trying to get in between, between people, but I, I know that a lot of people are really talking about that intersection.
I'll follow up with the APB.
Well, I know that's a slight problem.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, basically, let's talk about the police department a little bit, if we've gone through our studies and you've seen the other departments in our organization, the challenges they have, very similar to the ones we have in our organization. First slide we want to show you is what our fundamental purpose of the police department. In ladies' turn, we strive to make the quality of life better for everybody we serve. Simple philosophy, you see that as our mission statement, how we want to treat everyone and make sure everyone has a better quality of life to live in Southern Road, visit here and work here. Retention, employees leaving law enforcement agencies for better paying jobs, we're in competition with other law enforcement agencies, not only in the county, but here in the state. We have a competition to hire qualified people, also to keep them. Due to the economic times, either these other agencies are able to offer better incentive packages, and so we're constantly having to compete with different groups, whether state, local, federal agencies.
Didn't we just, didn't we just lose some officers to account because they're paying more than we are, and you stay rural, pay more?
Yes, ma'am, we just lost one, one's in the background with the sheriff's office now, and we have two more that's in the background with the state highway patrol. Once you lose those officers, it takes us a long time to get someone in and trained, replaced, and actually having that car answering calls. Training, some of the things that we do offer to make us competitive, career advancement plan, college incentive plan for tuition reimbursement, that's done through our, the city human resource department, field training program, we offer incentives for officers to actually be a trainer, to teach officers how to do their jobs a little bit better, their intermediate advanced certificate, and different management programs that we have in the organization that will create a career development and career advancement. Effectiveness for the department, you'll see the very first thing that I listed when I was doing my study for this, in preparing for us, the accreditation process, that's something that we have taken great pride with in our department, it's always changing, it's always evolving. This year, we're in the process of going to a completely paperless system, that's going to make it more effective, not internally, but also when we go and we have our onsite. Kalia's changed the way they do business, we're going to go into a four-year rotation next fall, or next spring, we'll have our onsite, and then next fall, we'll have our awards ceremony, hopefully everything will go well with that, but that's something that we need to look for down the road, and how we're going to continue to make our department accredited, recognized as one of the best. Neighborhood concerns, we work extremely hard to build good relationships in our communities. That's something that we pride ourselves on, the different types of communities that we've served, they all have different needs, and making sure that we address those needs, whatever it may be, but being proactive and reactive to them. The hidden gem of your police department is the youth programs and everything we do in the community, you will not find a better police department in this state that does more for the youth. That's something that we pride ourselves on, from it being an mentoring program in our middle school, to police athletic league, buying Christmas presents at Christmas time, and helping the needy children, make sure they have something special, is what these officers do every year, and it's very thankless, but it's something they're very proud of. We continue to do Dare, the Gray Program, and our Explorer Post. Right now, our Explorer Post is up to almost fifty kids, the high school age, they're wanting to learn about being a police, learning what it takes to be a police officer, actively involved in our organization. Crime rate, we've been very fortunate, it's remained neutral over the last few years. That's something that could be at risk, depending upon how the demographics will change within our, within our city, or it's going to depend upon how we lose officers, or how many officers we have respond to crimes. Calls for service, last year, we responded to sixty-one thousand calls for service inside the city of Littleton Road. More calls for service means more times we'll be tied up on calls and taken away from other things we could be doing. Where we're vulnerable at is loss of the youth programs, our police athletic league is getting ready to get started right back up to where the spring baseball, and we're very active with the children. There's a lot of aggravated youth at Mundera Middle School that we're helping and trying to make sure that our school resource officers are involved, not only just the day-to-day operations, but outside work, and making sure they're involved with these kids' lives. Loss of experienced officers, I mentioned that earlier, that's something that we can't just go and replace today, you have someone who's been here for ten years, they've been trained in different aspects of the organization, and makes us more effective and efficient in everything they do. And at the bottom, we'll see less community involvement, that would be something that we will have vulnerable, be very vulnerable, if you don't have the officers to, to actually go out and be involved in the community, then you're not going to be able to eliminate some of the problems that we're going to face. Increased high school, increased dropout rate in the high schools, at top, we talked about increased crime rate, higher call volume, that's a no-brainer, we all understand that. It's something we take pride into as part of with our public school system, is making sure if we have a kid that's at risk, let's help. I don't want to be dealing with them when they're twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three years old, if we can take that child and be involved in their life, and when they're in high school age or teenage years, maybe we'll have a positive impact, going to be able to steer them in a good path. Why does it matter? Protecting our future, our present, and you're going to be dealing with the past. So if you address all three of those needs, and I think it should go a long way, it doesn't matter how old you are, how young you are, where you live, or where you work, all of us have a vested interest in the right, everybody has a vested interest in the right, or we wouldn't be in this room. It matters because this is our home. A lot of us were born and raised here, we have a lot invested in our community, and we genuinely care about the people we serve. It's not always about writing tickets and going out and arresting people, if you make a positive impact on these communities you're serving, will enable foster a good relationship with the police department, but also in different areas of the community. Protecting the future by keeping up with the times and technology, that's a challenge that we all face. Technology is constantly evolving, and that creates, creates a whole element of crime that we're not really prepared in some aspects to deal with. If you take technology, and you see if I can sit at my desk and I can rob you, then it creates, steal your identity, then that's a whole different problem for our business people, that's a whole different problem for our citizens, because that's some of the aspects that we're having to deal with on a daily basis. And we, I think, if you seen it in the past weekend, you saw where the city substation has been robbed, it's constant, people still on copper wire. We've done everything that we can to catch that person and get it right back to this, but you take the cooperation from the local department, our detectives. But you take the cooperation from the department, our detectives, we're working on it together. Even Pete was involved in that, helped to get the information out to the media. So that's why it matters. Any questions?
I have a question. Now, you said that we were going to take it to the sheriff's department. How much is the sheriff's department paying now?
I've heard different stories, chief, on that one. The sheriff's office has different types of programs where they were going to pay for advanced degrees, intermediate degrees, and different assignments throughout the organization. So if they were assigned to a specific position, maybe a special assignment like that, sort of SWAT team, they'd be able to get more money for that assignment. A lot of it, they were taking the officer's experience, they were able to base their salary on that. I have not seen the counties pay plan, what the sheriff or they would actually give through through to the county commissioners, but they, from what I've been told, that they were actually, hey, you come in now, you're going to be paid X amount, and we have a career development plan. So they're taking our career development plan, maxed it out, then going somewhere else and being competitive and then able to use up that.
How much, and is there giving them like five hundred dollars a year, each year of experience, what I had heard?
And that may be too, Ms. Nash, I don't know. You go hear different stories. I'd be more happy to get in touch with the sheriff and get it, and chief Bailey, and get those information from them, and we work really well together. So they'll be more happy to share their information with us and come back with more concrete answers. I don't want to speculate, hey, this officer left, and he was going to get this amount of money. I just can't, I don't know that. But I know they're leaving, and I've had an officer have a background in this week here working for the sheriff's office.
I think they've outpaced us with their salaries now.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would like to see those statistics.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see what it is that they're doing, is that people think that the grass is greener on the other side.
Yes, ma'am. I'll take care of it.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Mason. Certainly appreciate the opportunity to talk to you a few minutes, and I, I'll be brief, but I just want to speak, yes, directly to our needs for this upcoming budget as far as staffing, as far as related staffing. As you know, in the, in the previous years, we've lost positions to, because of budget cuts, and we're not trying to grow or expand, we're essentially trying to get back to where we were three years ago, most importantly, trying to get back to the level of service we were providing three years ago. We did lose both full-time and part-time positions, we lost firefighters, we lost the fire marshal division, and we lost, we lost straightest support. This is just a quick look at, at where we are in the department. We've got, we've got eighty employees total in the fire department. And as you see there, seventy-two of those are in what we call our operations division. In other words, those are the firefighters that are providing the day-to-day service twenty-four hours a day out of the fire stations. We've got three in the fire marshal division, one in training, one in planning, and then three in administration. That's the, our administrative assistant, the assistant chief, and myself. As far as these, these seventy-two that you see in operations, the way they're broken down, we've got three shifts, three shifts with twenty-four people each, twenty-four employees each. So they, they staff these, the five fire stations that we have. So on this engine that's here at fire station one, there's three people assigned. This column is, are the number of firefighters that's assigned to that apparatus. And this is, this is what's assigned if, if everybody's here, everybody's working, if nobody's out on sick leave, or FMLA, or light duty, or anything. That's, that's, we've got the full eighty people. So we've got three on engine one, four on the line of rescue, and then four assigned to the apparatus of the four out stations, stations two, three, four, and five. This is the minimum we work with. In other words, the best it can be is a twenty-four on duty, and then we're twenty, twenty as the absolute minimum. Now, how does that, how does that compare with what our needs are? Let's look at these unmet requirements. We're, we're not meeting that, that four-person staffing model, and that is a, and you've heard me share this with you before, that is a nationally recognized standard, nationally recommended standard. And it's also, it's not just a nationally recognized standard, it's, it's a local need that we've identified. We, we've done our own risk assessment here, it's always a part of the accreditation process, and determine that four-person staffing is where we need to be. And also, if you recall back in ninety-eight, when we made the decision to separate from public safety, we had our study done here, the North Carolina League of Municipalities did that study, and their recommendation was to go to four-person staffing on the fire companies. So I just share that to say that it is both a local need that we've identified, and it's, and it's a nationally recommended standard as well. We're not meeting the current North Carolina Fire Inspection Schedule for our public buildings. We were meeting that prior to the loss of a position, but we just, with the loss of those positions, we've gotten behind, and we're just not, we're just not meeting it. And, and I just don't see a way that we can meet it with the staffing level that, that we have. And then the bottom one there is the, the public fire education programs as part of our accreditation. The requirement is that we have standard structured fire prevention programs, again, that we were providing, but we're just not able to provide them now with the staffing levels that we have. So, the benefits, if, by adding the personnel that we have requested in this year's budget, first and foremost is firefighter safety, safety of our employees, and that's been, various studies have been conducted on that, that shows that that four-person staffing level provides a safer working environment for the firefighters. To make our community safer, both from the additional firefighters that will be responding to, to emergencies, and also getting those public buildings inspected on the frequency they should be. And to be a more effective service for our citizens, there, again, there have been various studies done that have shown that that four-person staffing is just more effective than three people in that company. And if you know, the fire is so dynamic, and it grows so fast, things happen so fast when something's, when a building's on fire, and having that, what we call effective response force there, to mitigate that emergency is just, is just so important. There's also, recently, there was a NIST, the National Institute for Standards and Technology, they did a very in-depth study on firefighter staffing levels. And, and again, the results, or the, the results that came out of that study was that four-person staffing is much more effective than a lesser amount of staffing, the two or the three on, on the company. And then finally, to maintain or lower our insurance costs for our business and industry, where we've got a very good rating now, we've got a class three, obviously, we want to make sure we maintain that. We certainly would not want to digress in that. Would always like to improve it, of course, that would be an additional fraction for our businesses if we could improve that, but we certainly want to maintain that three and possibly, possibly improve it in the, in the future if we could. So, what are we, what are we requesting in this year's budget? Is three firefighters, and those are the three firefighters that were lost in two thousand and twelve, those three full-time firefighters. If you remember on that slide where I, where I showed on the staffing of each company, those three firefighters came off of engine one that's here at this fire station. So with those three firefighters, we'd be able to bring that staffing level on that truck from three back to four, which is where it was three years ago. Because you know, three will be one for each shift on those three shifts that I, that I spoke about earlier. One assistant fire marshal, we did add one last year, thank you for that. There was one added last year, so thank you for that, and we fell out with this other one. We would be able to both catch up on the building inspections that I spoke about, and also provide those structured programs that are important for our, for the accreditation. The other thing that's staffing-related or personnel-related is funding for a career development program. We currently do not have a career development program in the fire department. We've got a draft policy based on the, the program that the police department's doing, and it's been doing for a few years, and it's been very, I think, very successful and very effective there. And based on our calculations, it would take about ninety thousand dollars to fund that, and that will be given incentives for various certifications, degrees, educational degrees, those type of things.
Ron, why you got that up there? I ran into a citizen, and I told him I would relay his thoughts to the council. His name is Frank, and he has taught me points, to tell me that he knows a lot of these firemen, they don't make enough to live off of, and that it is a disgrace to this city that our firemen have to work two jobs. So I told him I would make council aware of his feelings. So with that being said, especially with that salary up there, I just wanted to relay what he has said.
Thank you for sharing that. And I think this career development program would, would be, it'd be a very worthwhile incentive, because I think what it would be, we would see that level of professionalism increase. So I think it would be certainly a good thing for us to do. As far as the risk and implications, increased firefighter risk, again, that's the, that's the primary concern with those operating with less than four-person companies. Increased public risk from the, the lack of those structured programs that we talked about, and also the, the building inspections. City liability, I think, is a, a risk in, in not being where we need to be on the inspection of the public buildings. And then finally, the, the risk, quite honestly, in losing our accreditation. We'll go back in twenty seventeen, August of twenty seventeen, for our reaccreditation, and we, we quite simply have to be meeting all those four criteria in order to be, to be reaccredited. So, that's the, that's, that's what we are, have requested in this year's budget, again, there's three firefighters, the one assistant fire marshal, and the, and those things are just to take us back again to where we were, and then career development program, in order to find that, that professionalism. So I'll be glad to ask you any questions that...
So you have four firefighters on each truck except for in headquarters, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. We have, on, on every company, we have four assigned except here. We've got three assigned there.
Okay, and also on your fire prevention programs that you said that you could lose accreditation for, could you speak to why you would need an extra person to do that instead of using somebody else? I know that, that question's been asked a lot, I'd like for you to, I'd like to address that if you would.
Well, quite simply, I just don't have anybody else to do that. And, and I know it's easy to say, well, why don't you let the firefighters on shift do that? And they do what they can. I mean, we, we do public education on request, if somebody asks for, for us to come out and do a talk, or that type of thing, we, we do that. But what the Commission on Accreditation looks for, our, our structured programs that we're regularly going into schools and targeting a certain age group or whatever, and, and I just don't have, if, if we use firefighters on shift to do that, then we're going to have to let something else go that's also a requirement to maintain that. But we're just not, we're, and we've been trying to, to catch up that inspection depth with, with on-ship folks, and with everything else that they've got, with the painting requirements, we're just not, I just can't, can't dedicate folks on shift to do that, but they're going to have to let something else go.
So who would do that job? The assistant fire marshal that you're asking for?
It would be, assistant fire marshal would, would do, would have two functions. One, would, would do inspections, would, to catch us up on those inspections we're behind on. And would also do that, you know, coordinate or run a fire prevention program. So it'd be one person, that one person would be responsible.
So do you have a career development program that you've developed or one in mind, or something that you're...
We do. We have a, we have a draft career development program, and it's, it's based after the one that the, the police department is using, so it's that same type format. Currently, we have, the, the ranks we have are firefighter, engineer, captain, and then battalion chief. What this would do, this would add a firefighter one, firefighter two, engineer one, engineer two, captain one, captain two, and with requirements on each one of those, you know, additional certifications, timing grade, and then as you get on up the ranks, would also include college courses, and, and then degrees for, you know, to get some into the higher ranks. So, yes, we do have it, we just, we just don't have the funding to do it. So I, I do have that, that program, and actually, Ms. Reed's has a copy of that, has been reviewing that. But we do have it, I just don't have the funding to do it.
Chief, were you going to offer any insights on the grant proposal that you have submitted?
We, we have submitted a grant, it's called, it's called a Safer Grant, it's Staffing for Fire and Berth's Response. And the grant deadline was back in March. So we did submit the grant for those three firefighter positions. And the grant is, it's a two-year grant, and if we do get the grant, the grant will pay one hundred percent of salary and benefits for two years. Now, the obligation to the city is that if we get the grant, we accept the grant, is that we cannot reduce staffing in the fire department during those two years. There's no obligation to maintain the positions after the two years, but in other words, with, with this staffing level we have now, if we, if we do, are selected to receive that grant, then our obligation is that we cannot reduce staffing during those two years.
Chief, what will you, what, what do you cost a, maybe think, when you hear from that?
I would say it would probably be six-month timeframe. And one thing that we, we have not done, one thing that the, the grant office requires, this is a federal grant, they require, they require a letter from the governing body making that commitment that we would not reduce that staffing level during the two years. And, and speaking with, with manager, Mr. Mason, we felt, he felt, I felt, that the best thing for us to do is to go ahead and, and submit the application during the, the deadline that we have. And then following these budget presentations, if council feels comfortable in providing that letter, then we'll send the letter to attach with the application. If you don't feel comfortable, then we, you know, we can withdraw the application. But that would be, again, our obligation is that we, we do not reduce staffing below this level that we see that we currently are during the two-year period.
Have you already applied?
We have applied, yes.
Well, I, I can't imagine us reducing what you got in two years. So I would say, you know, absolutely, in my opinion, we need to apply for it and then go for it, because you're talking about two years, and they pay all of it for two years, that would be a win-win situation for the entire city. So, you know, I say, yes, we should apply, and I hope that we can get it.
Is this a federal, federal grant?
Yes, ma'am, it is a federal grant.
We've been, we have got some in the past, have we not?
We have.
We've been real fortunate in getting federal grants, and with our situation, and, you know, I feel good about, we might, might get another grant.
So you, you'd like to have a letter from council or council?
Well, if council is, at, at some point, at some point in the near future, I need you to submit a letter from council with that commitment or withdraw the application.
Well, I don't see, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that it give you a letter.
Counsel, second. Yeah, I don't see a problem with a letter either. I think it'd be good if you could get this grant. Have a motion in second, all in favor for the letter. And if so, okay, you've got your letter, hopefully get the grant.
I do too.
It'd be great for the city if we could get that grant and help you a little bit, help the city in a whole other way.
I have another question, chief. We were talking about losing employees to other agencies, to other places besides Kevin McGowan. Have you lost anybody to other?
That's the only one. Kevin McGowan. He works to the union county, is a union county fire marshal.
Well, I'll say one thing, talking about the fire marshal, you must, we are you, we have in the past trained right. The last three fire marshals we furnished across counties, is that not correct, sir? I just wanna get that in for everybody.
That's correct.
But we do it something right.
That's correct. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chief, we follow by Brian Moore.
I'm back. If we have time, I'll have another one for you too, but. Staffing challenges, parks and rec. There are three needs that we see in parks and rec. Programming coordinator, facilities manager, and an HVAC specialist. Program coordinator, this is a position that we have had in the past. Some of you may remember, Tanya started out in this position years ago. And this is a position that's important and critical, we're finding as we're hearing from our different rec centers, communities. This kind of helps stabilize the guidance for all of those directors in all of those centers, coordinates their efforts. It helps to get a person with them one-on-one, prioritizing programming, engaging that community, and working with those rec centers as a community partner along with the directors. They would help with the marketing and of course, you know, assessing needs and programming awareness and those kinds of things. Facilities manager, we have a parks superintendent slash facilities manager. This would separate those two duties. Eric could focus on parks and their needs or unmet needs or deferred needs. And our facilities manager would basically focus on the buildings and their systems, the physical structures that are throughout the city. They would be dedicated to that aspect along being able to assess and prioritize and plan and budget and implement any kind of deferred maintenance strategy along with that. And it would help in documenting, like I said, that assessment, condition assessment, in documenting those needs and those dollars that we have to spend. The third is an HVAC specialist. This would be an on-staff dedicated person that would take care of our HVAC planned maintenance and some minor repairs. This would be someone inside the city rather than some contract like we have it now. It's out on contract. And this is where staff believes that we can realize a savings potential in this area here. Benefits, we feel that we'd be more efficient and effective with these positions. We would have our current staff better serve the needs, both internal and external, our community, better delivery of services. And this would further our efforts in maintaining and improving what we provide to the community and our facilities in a more focused way. And then, of course, potential savings. There's been three positions proposed. The program coordinator would be a sixty-five thousand dollar position. That includes, all of these include benefits. Facilities manager, a hundred eight, and HVAC specialist, sixty-five. The savings, as you see, and I took a conservative approach on this along with staff, our planned maintenance contract currently is right around thirty-five thousand dollars. So that would be a savings. We wouldn't need that contract with this person. The repairs and parts, I think we can save, you know, with minor repairs on different parts, about twenty-three thousand dollars. That equates to fifty-eight thousand dollars of that sixty-five thousand. Now, like I said, there might be more we can realize, but I'm not willing to put my name on that just yet. We'll have to figure that out. Equipment is for all of these positions. It's basically a total for all three. And like I said, in one, we can see some savings. So that would be kind of a reallocation or prioritization of some needs. Risk and implications, inability to maintain our current level. You know, we do have limited programming offers at the different facilities. Maybe we could tweak those to better serve communities with some assistance. Burnout of staff. Staff is, has taken on a lot in the past in parks and rec with duties and additional responsibilities. Of course, addressing our assets, our capital assets, we'd better be able to do that. That was through previous deferred maintenance presentation that alluded to what that is. And coordination suffers with limited time workload, planning suffers. And then, of course, researching and spending time looking at alternative means of funding for different things in parks and rec. If we're maxed out in other areas, we have no time to do some of that. So this would help alleviate some of those. Give us a little more time. Not saying we can fix everything, but we can certainly try. And that's my presentation.
Is there no questions? And Brian, Brian, we follow by Don.
Good afternoon. I want to take a few minutes to talk about some staffing additions. Would like to, with your question in this budget for electric services. I'll start with the electric department. We have, we have two, three positions we've asked for in the budget for the electric department. Two substation maintenance technicians and a part-time administrative assistant. I'll start with the substation maintenance technicians. As you're aware, we've done a lot of work in building substations over the last few years. An electric transmission loop around the town. As we've built these things, we've seen that the complexity of our substations has increased. Before, you used to be able to take a screw out of a relay and move it to another slot to change the setting. Now you have to connect the computer to a microprocessor and tell the microprocessor to change the setting. We also have a fiber optic loop that connects all the substations so that protected equipment, that two separate substations can communicate with each other and coordinate their operations properly. And we, again, we have the transmission loop, which has just added the complexity to the system. Previously, or currently, we use two line technicians to do substation maintenance. We typically put two of our line technicians doing substation maintenance for a year and a half to two years so that they'll come familiar with the substations and, you know, in the out of the situation, hopefully they know enough to make a temporary repair, restore power in the substation. With the complexity of the system, that's just not working too well for us now. We need to get some people dedicated to substation maintenance and have some additional training. We hope to, with these two people developing house expertise for our substations, cuts in operating costs. We currently do a lot of contracting for substation maintenance work. Improve our response and reliability and, again, have some reductions in other operating costs by not using outside contractors. For next year, we're budgeting thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for outside contractors. This current year, we had over a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the budget for substation maintenance. The two personnel with salary and benefits would be about a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars a year. We anticipate being able to hire some people with some prior experience and training on that, generally be on the job training. If at the end of the day, there's no other budget cuts to fund these positions, it would take a point-two-six percent rate increase in our electric fund to, electric rates to cover these positions. But as we've gone through the budget, I think there'll be some savings that help offset and have a rate increase for these two positions. You know, the risk and implications, if we don't add these positions, we'll just continue to have not as good substation maintenance as we could. Power restoration will be a little slower without the highly trained technicians and we will continue to see costs for contractors in the budget. Part-time administrative assistant, we currently have two administrative assistants. One of the chief duties is answering customer phone calls throughout the day, taking care of clerical work for the department. We have situations now when one is on lunch or one's on vacation that we're left with just one person to answer the phones. We call on the staff from our purchasing department or our engineering staff to fill in for the phones. So it's not the best utilization of our staffing for phone call answering. We think that this added position will increase productivity of having two people to answer the phones throughout the day. There is an issue when we receive a natural gas leak call. There's a specific protocol we have to go through to inform the customers of what they need to do to alleviate any potential hazards from the natural gas leak. When we bring purchasing staff and engineering technicians in to answer the phones, we've trained them on what to say, but since they don't do it frequently, we just have a potential miss there of possibly not getting the right message to somebody when there's a leak. We think also that there'll be some efficiency improvements in our record and data keeping. As you imagine, we receive about seventy-five phone calls a day. Our administrative assistants are working on something with that many phone interruptions. It takes a toll on some of that other work. And we started a big program, Laserfish, to better organize our Laserfish documents. Every customer that we serve, we have an address file for them. Some of those files have over a thousand documents in them. So we're going through systematically and putting those documents into a better format, into different folders so that we can retrieve those better. It's gonna be a several-year project. The addition of this staff personnel will allow that to go better as well. And we think the part-time position salary and benefits will be about forty-three thousand dollars, forty-four thousand dollars maybe. And again, if we're able to find somebody with some prior admin experience, we'd train them to just be on the job. Again, a rate increase to cover this if no other savings can be found is a point-zero-seven-seven percent rate increase to cover the cost of this position. Implications, it will be just a little less effective with customer service without that second person to answer the phones throughout the day. We will continue to have a little less efficient use of some of our professional staff to fill in for phone calling. And again, possible issue with a natural gas leak. Call this smart story, not as well as it should. Moving over to the natural gas division, we have one position we're asking for here is a utility locator. We currently have one locator. He does locations for both the electric and natural gas utilities. I think these are out of order, but we'll just go with them as they are. The staff addition would be about sixty-six thousand dollars in benefits and salary, forty-four thousand dollars in equipment, the truck and locating equipment. Again, with the system hiring someone with some experience or hopefully finding one of our current gas or electric employees that would see this as a good move for their career. Training would be generally on the job and, again, it would take a point-three-nine percent rate increase if no other savings are found to fund this position and the gas fund. Benefits of this additional locator is ensure that we're compliant with state and federal laws, maintain in-house expertise. Current locator has told us that he's probably gonna retire in two to three years. And so part of the idea of getting this locator on now is to have them work together. The new locator will be able to learn a lot from the current locator. And just to give you an idea of some of the locates, we do, in two thousand ten, we did about fifty-eight hundred locates. In two thousand fourteen, we did ninety-two hundred. We see the bypass is supposed to start this year. We anticipate the number of locates increasing significantly with that. And with just the general term in the economy, we're seeing more locates. So we think the ninety-two hundred level is gonna continue to probably increase. We'll also have better reliability and less damage with the second locator. And it's gonna give us a chance to do some additional things to improve our record keeping and mapping. The locator, if we find some downtime, we'll use the locator to go out. Our gas service lines are not located in our mapping system. We'll systematically go locate those so that we have a better record and knowledge of where the pipelines are. Risk and implications, you know, we could have been in noncompliance with state and federal laws. One idea here with the state laws, the state laws on utility locating changed last year and they added a really big addition to it in that once we've gone out and located the lines, the contractor can call us with questions and our locator has to show up within two hours to answer their questions. So that would not see a huge impact from that, but as the contractors learn more about the law, we think that's gonna impact our operations and we will be in noncompliance if our locator doesn't show up within that two-hour period. Other risks are lower reliability, more hits on our gas and electric system and outages resulting from that, increased damages. And again, with a current locator that intends to retire, there's a chance of a lot of institutional knowledge walking out without us having a good chance to capture some of it. Glad to answer your questions, Chief.
If there are none, may I, members of city council, I'd like to pose a question to you whether, if you have interest in proceeding with perhaps one SWAT presentation. I understand it takes about five minutes. I'll dispense with my wrap-up and summary comments and just close with the listing of future meetings. The slide that shows the future meeting topics and dates.
Of the county of which?
I'll say go for it. Let's hear it.
Like TF, our police chief, present the department's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Thank you, chief.
I got it. Five minutes. We're gonna talk about this real quick. Obviously, you said it's trans fire department. I'll characterize this real briefly.
I'll characterize this real briefly. It's our employees. It's sworn as civilian. We could not do what we do every day if it wasn't for them. Accreditation, we talked about that earlier. It should strengthen our organization because it gives our employees something to be proud of. Also, you as council, you as citizens of Monroe, it gives you something to be proud of in your organization. Community involvement, as I alluded to earlier, taking one step further and getting involved with the children, the different types of programs that we can reach them, whether it be in sports, whether it be in mentoring, with association with Red Cross, or even in DARE in the elementary schools. We have good training facilities with our range, ability to train our officers in-house, actually, it's a way to save money for the city. And our strong relationships with the various city departments that we have representatives here, but also our law enforcement agencies within the community. Weaknesses, we addressed that earlier today, our lack of police headquarters, the spacing at the end, so it's one of the biggest weaknesses worth facing. We talked a little bit about our manpower, the vacant positions that we have with officers leaving, but also we lost some positions back in 2012.
Let me ask a question. Wasn't it true that when we lost those positions back then, it was the DARE, the GRADE programs, wasn't that, something had to do with the schools and that, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
So, therefore, your strengths of putting people in the school, putting officers in the schools were cut in 2012 when those positions were basically done away with?
Yes, ma'am. Good. We reallocate people around to backfill those positions. Exactly right. Some other challenges that we're having there, difficulty recruiting minority candidates. We need to invest more money in our technology, for example, body cameras. That's one of the things that's in our budget this year that were sent to the manager for, to look at and try to address that issue of some of the things we need. Social media is a big way to, we can reach out to the public in a very inexpensive way to something. We need to be involved more with Twitter, Facebook, getting information out to our citizens. And it's something, another challenge we have, we're going to have a certified specialized person that's just designated straight for crime scene. Opportunities, further diversify the department's workforce by minority recruiting, and that's something we take very serious when involving community colleges in trying to get the best applicants we can. Continue in our accreditation process and gold standard, this last time we were recognized as gold standard is something we'd like to keep and maintain. With that comes challenges and responsibilities that we need to address within our own organization. Promote fitness levels, that's something that we're looking at. The city has a health program. We're going to look at, do want to have a physical fitness requirement that would be phased in over the next six years. And utilizing technology to further enhance public perception and safety for our officers. Threats, the budget restraints that we've faced over the past few years with capital improvements not being addressed. Crime has become global, and I looked at that fact earlier, where we're dealing with a lot of crimes on the internet, property crimes, folks largely with bank accounts, what you had in your credit card fraud, all that type of stuff's happening over the internet, and we're having to use different type of resources to investigate those crimes. Some of the issues too, we have in towns we address, and working with Mr. Tom Winters' group with vacant properties here, that's something, quality of life issues that we work with the third department to address those different types of concerns that come from there. And maintain adequate staffing levels to meet the increased demands for our service and hiring and retaining qualified personnel. One of the things, Chief, you start to see on the federal level with Department of Justice, restricting our asset forfeiture funds, that's just the beginning. We will see different challenges we'll have over that. Also, terrorism coming back to different types of issues that follow from that, or come back to local law enforcement, because we'll be the first responders to that.
Brian, I have a question. How much are body cameras?
Ma'am?
How much are the body cameras?
We've requested $50,000 this year. Just the actual camera itself, Miss Nash, I would say it's less than $1,000, but the infrastructure that has to go with it, the servers, the ability to download that, store that data, we're going to have to address it because it's going to be evidence, just like our in-car video cameras. So, we're looking at trying those two systems together to make them one.
Do you know whether there's going to be any federal, some of the cops program, there's going to be federal grants for any of this? I'm just curious.
Yes, ma'am, there is some grants for that, but, again, they will buy the actual physical camera.
But you have to have the infrastructure.
We've got to have the infrastructure. When we do that, then, you know, we're going to partner with IT and say, how you have some redesigned, and where am I going to put a server? I run out of closets. I don't have anywhere else to store another server. We put, literally, we stack them on top of each other, so we've got to address that.
Do we have body cameras now?
Yes, ma'am, we have four.
And do they have a, don't we have a server for that?
We do have a server for that, but it's actually a standalone system where you have to go in every day and download it. Camera has to be plugged into a system that's downloaded, you make a copy. We're actually looking at trying to tie it in with our in-car camera through L3 and make it one, so it's a lot easier. So, when the officer gets out of the car, you're recording everything. When the traffic stops, we're actually getting a video of the interaction of what goes on in the car.
Who uses those four cameras now?
It's assigned on the four cameras we use every day is to patrol officers. The supervisor is assigned to an officer on that squad, so one officer will have that and just rotates around through the supervisor's assignment.
How many cameras can you get for $50,000? I'm talking about the server. What you need, how many will you have available?
I think the initial thing, Mayor, off the top of my head, is right around, is right around 50. We're trying to outfit all the uniformed officers around in patrol cars and some of our community intervention team, all the guys that are going to be, and the ladies that are going to be in uniform, we want to get them to have body cameras. Those are some things we're going to start with.
Have you got any quote-to-price as yet?
Yes, sir, I just don't have that material.
Oh, I expect you to remember that. That's one of the issues.
Yes, sir, we're already pricing, we're already trying to make it, take a common-sense approach to it, the venue that we already have, the cameras that we buy for our in-car cameras, we're trying to merge, have, use their body camera system so it all merges.
Oh, in reality, if you can get 50, $50,000 is about a $5,000 per camera available.
Yes, sir, but that price will decline over the next years because once we buy the infrastructure, I just need to replace the camera.
Yeah, the infrastructure is usually...
Yeah, that's the startup cost, I guess, so.
But you will have, you will have a periodic cost, say, over four years for replacing your infrastructure because hard drives and the storage wear out about four years or so.
Okay.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you, Chief. Thank you, staff, for your insights, for your job. Appreciate it. Last slide. This concludes the session, and this highlights the upcoming meetings that we have, as I mentioned at the beginning of this afternoon's meeting. April 9th is our first committee forum at Old Armory, and then followed by one at Monroe Country Club on 13th. Both of them begin at 5:30. We're hoping for standing only.
Yeah.
A little holdup after that. April 21st...
Better foot of its own, facilities, if you're going to do that.
Sir, same.
We'll see, we'll see.
You're going stand by my mother just on her chair, so.
Okay. April 21st, we're attended, we'd like to proceed with closing out the SWOT presentations, and the bottom of the page highlights what the budget calendar, as I understand it, the 5th, we plan to introduce the budget, 19th, a public hearing, June 20th or June 2nd, adopt the budget. If things need to slide, we could shift the public hearing to the 2nd and an optional 16th. But the budget, fiscally, you're ending 16, does take effect in July. Any questions? I believe food is assembled on the table just through that door on the right, and that concludes mine and staff's comments.
Can't believe anything. Here, don't have a motion?
Motion for a judge.
Second. All in favor? Come back to it.